Yes, they all have to be on five minutes.
For the whole meeting now.
Oh, oh, okay.
On. I used to have a little sensor mic.
These ones do the different things. Those are removable.
Unless you're me and you rip them out of the floor.
Yeah, okay.
I've rewired three of them.
Okay.
I only destroyed one.
Forget to unplug the board jack and move the table.
Of course, that makes sense. Okay.
Just need to be like that much shorter.
Here's the laptops. Here's the laptop. Okay. Am I allowed? Yeah.
That's sure.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
You have some things to share.
Okay. I saw one change in the lobby, but okay. A hole in the wall. Did you, did you guys find?
All right, we'll go ahead and open the meeting at six thirty. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the very right with the court which has passed. When I mentioned under God, in the invisible, for the liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call. Oh, yes. All right, we'll go ahead and do roll call of the commissioners.
Commissioner Walthius.
Present.
Commissioner Melcher.
Here.
Commissioner Wood.
Here.
Commissioner Journey.
Present.
Commissioner White.
Present.
Commissioner Graybill.
Here.
Right, so move on to approving our meeting minutes from last meeting. Planning Commission meeting minutes on August eighth. Oh, I'm sorry. We're going to be moving on to looking at the meeting minutes from our meeting on August eighth.
I reviewed the minutes and I would like to make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
And we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? All right. Well, with that, we will move on to our public hearings. I'm going to open the public hearing. First, we're going to be looking at our application, correct? It's the.
Yes, so commissioners, I would like to request that we switch them around and do the subdivision staff report first instead of the variance application there. It will become clear why, but it would be easier if we did this subdivision first, if that's okay.
All in agreement to do subdivision first? Okay. All right, then with that, I will open the hearing for application SD twenty four dash zero one. The applicant is requesting to subdivide approximately two hundred and eighty-two thousand seven hundred and four square foot or six point four nine acre property into twenty-nine residential lots, a storm detention lot, an association roadway, and utility improvement.
Commissioner Wood.
Yes.
Um.
Am I reading the wrong?
You should have one. It should, the cross-stuff twenty-nine should be crossed out and there should be a twenty-seven. Did I put them in the wrong order?
Right past your.
Oh, this one. Okay, thank you. I apologize. The applicant is requesting to subdivide an approximately two hundred and eighty-two thousand seven hundred and four square foot, six point four nine acre property into twenty-seven residential lots, one storm detention lot and associated roadway and utility improvements. The subject property is to the east of Twenty-third Avenue and the west of Twenty-seventh Avenue and is identified by the Lynn County Tax Assessors Map Number one-three S zero-one E three-two C A. Tax Lot four-four-zero-three. Lot sizes would range from seven thousand three hundred and nine square feet to twelve thousand four hundred and seventy-eight square feet. All lots would be eligible to be developed with single-family dwellings or duplexes accordance to S H M C one-seven dot one-zero dot zero-two-zero A and B. The subject property is in a residential low-density zone and the application SD twenty-four dash the R one is pending the approval of V R twenty-four oh one. Application SD twenty-four oh one and V R twenty-four oh one are being filed simultaneously.
The substantive criteria and expertise.
Oh, yes, thank you. All right, before. Sorry. The applicable substantive criteria are listed in the staff report. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed towards the criteria described or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation, which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements are evidence sufficient to afford the decision. The decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. That will get our declarations from the commission. Does anyone on the commission have personal bias? Does matter?
No.
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 No. Conflict of interest?
No.
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 No. Any expertise information?
No.
I drove through the site.
I have none.
And I just wanted to make note, I considered it last time, but this time just because of my previous day job. I'm very familiar with this property. Walked it around quite a bit and actually wrote part of the original city report to the, at that time, Planning Commission. But that's not affecting my objectivity.
Thank you for disposing that.
Yeah.
All right, with that, we will move to Angela for the staff report.
Okay, so as you can see in front of you, the applicant also submitted an additional plan today. What I would like to do is I'm going to go through the staff report related to the plan that was in your packet first and then I will transition over to that and just read the notes I have that are different from the one that was in your packet, if that is okay. Of the first one, yeah. Thank you. All right. As Commissioner Wood stated, the applicant is requesting to subdivide an approximately two thousand eight hundred, two hundred and eighty-two thousand seven hundred and four square foot acre, six point four nine acre property into twenty-seven residential lots, one storm detention lot, and associated roadway and utility improvements. One other note, I apologize. I'm going to go through most of the changes and won't repeat a lot of it since we've already heard a lot of it once and if there wasn't significant changes. Also, the portion that says application SD twenty-four dash zero one is pending the approval of V R twenty-four dash zero one. Be aware that depending on your decision with the subdivision site plans, V R twenty-four dash zero one may no longer be applicable, so. All right, so based on the review of the FEMA Flood Insurance Rate Map Panel four-one-zero-four-three-C zero-nine-one-four-G dated September twenty-ninth, twenty-ten, the subject properties are not in the special flood hazard area. The subject property does not show local wetlands, waterways on the property. However, DSL submitted a comment, the applicant requested off-site determination in twenty-twenty, which was WD twenty-twenty dash zero-zero-three-five. They sent a copy of the response to our office. The determination recommended a wetland delineation to be completed and submitted to the department for review. No delineation has been received as of the submission of the staff report and staff recommends a condition of approval that a wetland delineation be completed before development can commence. There was a change of access. The subject property has access from Foothills Drive and Twenty-third Avenue. Lots thirteen, seventeen, twenty-one, and twenty-five are accessed via flag lots and lots fourteen, eighteen, twenty-two, and twenty-six are accessed via access and utility easements. Water and sewer are available on Twenty-third Avenue and Foothills Drive. There were no changes to the street comments. Our Public Works Engineer made an additional comment after reviewing this site plan. He says, no utilities are shown, so hopefully they can show corrections. It looks like a future water tower easement that ran through lots twenty-six and twenty-seven is completely gone. Additionally, no outlet easement is shown from storm detention to ditch north of the subdivision. And so skipping down to, sorry, the submittal requirements. The applicant submitted the original application SD twenty-four dash zero one on June twentieth, twenty-twenty-four. Staff deemed the application complete on June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four. They resubmitted a site plan, which is attached on August twenty-seventh. Each parcel shall satisfy the dimension standards of the applicable zone unless a variance from each standard is approved. The proposed subdivision is zoned residential low-density. The density requirements for residential development are a maximum of five-point-four dwelling units per net acre. Duplexes shall count as one dwelling unit for purposes of density calculation. The minimum lot area for a single-family dwelling manufactured home or duplex is seven thousand square feet. The minimum width of building line is seventy feet. Tax Lot four-four-zero-three is approximately six point four nine acres and the maximum density allowed shall be thirty-five dwelling units. The applicant is proposing a subdivision consisting of twenty-seven residential lots and one storm detention lot. Lot sizes would range in size from seven thousand three hundred and nine square feet to twelve thousand four hundred and seventy-eight square feet. The lot width of building line ranged from seventy-one feet to eighty-five point two-four feet. Based on the above findings, staff finds that the application complies with these criteria. Existing buildings shall comply with the setback requirements of the applicable zone unless variance from the requirements is approved. Staff finds there are no existing buildings nor development proposed with this application. Building setback requirements will be reviewed during the development phase. D, adequate public facilities, including access, shall be available to serve the existing and newly created parcels. If adjacent properties are undeveloped or landlocked, consideration will be given to extending appropriate access to those properties in accordance with adopted city policy. Staff findings, the proposed site plan, which is now Attachment C, shows an access and utility easement serving Lot twenty-six on Lot twenty-five, terminating just south of the north boundary line of Lot twenty-five. The City of Sweet Home recommends a provision for a public water line easement in the common driveway serving Lot twenty-six on Lot twenty-five, extending to the rear lot line of Lot twenty-five. The easement would run from the south right-of-way line of the Foothills Drive to the south line of Lot twenty-five. The city is looking forward fifteen to twenty years to a need for an additional water reservoir in the area with the adjacent property to the south at the right elevation and location. It has access from Ames Creek Road, so that only a water line would be connected through the lots. We would likely place a conduit in the ground at the time of construction to feed the future water line through without the need for excavation at the future time. The development will need to link the proposed water system on Foothills Drive to Harding Street. Twenty-third Avenue had a very small water line that was inadequate to connect to. The city has placed two hundred and fifty feet of six-inch water line in Twenty-third Avenue from the Harding Street six-inch water line southward to a few feet from the drainage channel culvert. This proposed subdivision shall connect at a new end point now with a crossing under the channel. The channel culvert currently has only six six inch to eight inch of cover. The indicated proposed mainline sewer system appears to be able to provide each lot with service for the properties on the south boundary that appear to be sharing the driveway access. Each lot will have its own sewer lateral line. With the above conditions, the application complies with this criteria. Minimum lot area. The subject lots are zoned residential low-density. The minimum lot area in the R one zone is seven thousand square feet. Based on the submitted site plans, Attachment C, the proposed lot sizes shall range in size from approximately seven thousand three hundred and nine square feet to approximately twelve thousand four hundred and seventy-eight square feet. Based on the above findings, staff finds that the application complies with these criteria. Lot width and depth. Based on the submitted site plans, Attachment C, no depth of a lot or parcel exceeds three times the width of the parcel. And because of that, the variance for the lot depth has now been rescinded because it isn't longer needed. So, based on the above findings, staff finds that the application complies with these criteria. Access. The proposed site plan shows that all lots shall have either direct access to Foothills Drive, access via an access and utility easement, or access via flag lot. The applicant is requesting an amended variance to Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen point five eight point zero-three-zero C three to allow fifteen percent or four lots as opposed to ten percent, approximately three lots of lots within the proposed subdivision to be accessed by private access easement. Staff recommends a condition of approval that approval of the proposed subdivision application SD twenty-four dash zero one be contingent on the approval of the variance application V R twenty-four dash zero one. With the above conditions, the application complies with this criteria. Flag lots. The applicant is proposing four flag lots. The access strip is twenty feet in width with an improved surface of sixteen feet. The access strips do not exceed the hundred and fifty feet. Based on the above findings, staff finds the application complies with these criteria. Through lots, the application is not proposing any through lots. Lot sidelines. As depicted on Attachment C, the proposed parcels would have sidelines that are at or very close to right angles to the public street. Based on the above findings, staff finds the application complies with these criteria. Utility easements. I covered the findings under D on page six and seven, so I prefer not to repeat them. Additional standards for subdivisions, A, general. The subject lots are zoned residential low-density. The minimum lot area for R one zone is seven thousand square feet. Based on the submitted site plan, the proposed lot sizes range in size from approximately seven thousand three hundred and nine square feet to approximately twelve thousand four hundred and seventy-eight square feet. The lot sizes provide adequate building sites for single-family dwellings and duplexes. Based on the submitted site plan, the applicant has proposed a local street width of fifty feet. The proposed access and utility easements on the south side of Foothills Drive are approximately twenty feet wide and the shared driveways are paved with of approximately sixteen feet. Staff finds that the length, width, and shape of the block provides adequate building sites and the applicant considers safe pedestrian and bicycle traffic, convenient access and traffic circulation. Based on the above findings, staff finds the application complies with these criteria. Sizes. Based on the submitted site plan, the length of the subdivision block from Twenty-seventh Avenue to Twenty-third Avenue is approximately nine hundred and fifty-three feet. The proposed length is similar to and in some cases shorter in length than blocks in the surrounding neighborhoods. Based on the above findings, staff finds the application complies with these criteria. Traffic circulation. The intersection of Foothills Drive and Twenty-third Avenue will require a street name sign and post installed. A stop sign will not be necessary. Not every local street intersection needs a stop controlled condition. State of Oregon traffic rules provide guidance to drivers on the general right-of-way use at T and cross intersections. The planning indicates a curb and sidewalk along the east side of Twenty-third Avenue. That would be a half-street, which is really a three-quarter street on the ground comprised of sidewalk, curb, and drainage pavement to the center line and the opposite lane. There will need to be a curb on that side too because residents will travel to and from the subdivision both directions on Twenty-third Avenue. Because of the very poor conditions of Twenty-third Avenue and it being the most direct path westward to the community, the improvements on Twenty-third Avenue need to extend to Harding Street. The city may be able to partner with the developer to improve the street network at Twenty-third Avenue and Harding Street. Relevant to street standards, Twenty-seventh Avenue is a forty-foot right-of-way. Twenty-eighth Avenue is a fifty-foot right-of-way and Twenty-ninth Avenue is a sixty-foot right-of-way. Mountain View is a forty-foot right-of-way and Harding Street is a forty-foot right-of-way. With the above conditions, the application complies with this criteria. Connectivity. No reserved strips or stubbed-in streets are required for this proposed subdivision. The proposed subdivision block is longer than six hundred feet. However, staff finds the proposed public access provides safe, efficient, and direct connection of Foothills Drive from Twenty-third Avenue to Twenty-seventh Avenue. Attachment C sheet C one-zero-two shows the access and utility easements of shared driveways for all lots abutting easements. Based on the above findings, staff find the application complies with these criteria. Collector and arterial connections. The applicant is not proposing a collector or arterial street with this application. Design standards. Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen point four-two point zero-four-zero, local street standards, show a minimum required bike lane of seven feet. However, this is topographical error. That will be amended in the future code amendments. And staff finds that the on-street bicycle improvements matching the surrounding neighborhoods is adequate. Based on the above findings, staff finds the application complies with these criteria. Improvement requirements. Improvements. The maintenance of private stormwater basin is up to the local residents without, with or without an HOA who benefit from the subdivision development and the stormwater basin, not the city. The property needs to remain under ownership of the development or the HOA. So, access and utility easements, main sewer line systems, intersections of Foothill Drive, Twenty-third, and curb and sidewalk have already been covered in previous sections. However, the development will need to link the proposed water system on Foothills Drive to Harding Street, Twenty-third Avenue, and a very small water line that was inadequate to connect. To the city has placed two hundred feet of, I'm still repeating this, six-inch water line in Twenty-third Avenue from the Harding Street six-inch water line southward a few feet from the drainage channel culvert. The proposed subdivision shall connect at the new end point now with a crossing under the channel. The channel culvert currently has a six inch to eight inch of cover. Staff shall recommend a condition of approval that the applicant comply with all improvement requirements listed in Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen point five eight zero-six-zero. With the above conditions, the application complies with this criteria. Completion of improvements. Streetlights will need to be installed at the appropriate locations. All new streetlights and subdivisions shall be aluminum material with an anchor pier. The light fixture itself shall be an LED luminaire and shall, excuse me, conform to Oregon P U C standards. Again, the proposed water system, mainline sewer, water connection, sanitary sewer, storm lines, and curb and sidewalk and street names have all been covered. And additionally, the proposal shows a fifty-foot right-of-way which provides adequate width on each side for a five-foot sidewalk, three-foot planter, and six-inch curb, which provides a minimum of seven-foot parking and travel lanes. Staff shall recommend a condition of approval that the applicant comply with all improvement requirements listed in Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen five eight zero-six-zero. With the above conditions, the application complies with this criteria. Conclusion and recommendation. Based on the findings discussed in Section Three above, staff recommends that this application be approved. The application shall be subject to compliance with the conditions listed below as required by the findings of fact and the review and criteria in Section Three above. Any modification to the conditions listed below would require an approval in accordance with provisions of law. For example, variance, subsequent land use application, etc. If the Planning Commission approves this application, staff recommends that conditions of approval listed below be required in order to ensure that the application is consistent with the findings in review and design criteria at Section Three and as required by the Sweet Home Municipal Code and other provisions of law. Appeals to the Land Board use of a, Land Use Board of Appeals, L U B A, may only be based on review and design criteria. Recommended conditions if the application is approved. One, the final configuration of the proposed lot shall substantially conform to the plot plan reviewed in this application. The applicant shall subdivide an approximately two hundred and eighty-two thousand seven hundred and four square foot, six point four nine acre property into twenty-seven residential lots, one storm detention lot, and associated roadway and utility improvements. The subject properties are identified on the Lynn County Tax Assessors Map Number thirteen S zero-one E three-two C A tax lot. Lot sizes would range in size from seven thousand three hundred and nine square feet to twelve thousand four hundred and seventy-eight square feet. All lots would be eligible to be developed with single-family dwellings and/or duplexes per Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen-ten zero-two-zero A and B. The subject property is in the residential low-density R one zone. The subject properties are in the pardon me, I don't know why I repeated that. Two, approval of the amended variance application V R twenty-four dash zero one. Three, the applicant shall provide the city a copy of the completed wetland delineation report before development can commence. Four, the applicant shall provide a public water line easement through Lot twenty-five in the common driveway that serves Lot twenty-six. The easement would be the same size as the proposed shared utility and access easement as noted on the attached site plan. Attachment C, the easement would run from south right-of-way line of Foothills Drive to the south line of Lot twenty-five and shall be shown on the final plat. Number five, the applicant shall link the proposed water system on Foothills Drive to Harding Street. The proposed subdivision shall connect to the new six-inch water line and end point with a crossing under the channel. The channel culvert currently has only six, six inch to eight inch of cover. Number six, the applicant shall install a street name sign at the intersection of Foothills Drive and Twenty-third Avenue. Seven, the stormwater basin shall remain under private ownership and not be transferred to the City of Sweet Home. The maintenance of private stormwater basins is up to the local residents with or without an HOA. Eight, the applicant shall either provide an easement on the adjacent lot to the stormwater detention area, which is seven fifty-one Twenty-third Avenue, or provide a public right-of-way connection to provide a connection from the stormwater detention area to the stormwater ditch. Nine, the applicant shall provide stormwater collection easement along lots thirteen to twenty-six to accommodate the runoff from the south hillside. The stormwater collection will be through the utility easements to Foothill, Foothills Drive. Ten, on Twenty-third Avenue, the applicant shall develop half-street improvements on the ground comprised of the sidewalk, curb, and drainage pavement to the center line and the opposite lane. The improvements on Twenty-third Avenue need to extend to Harding Street. Eleven, the applicant shall provide each lot with its own sewer lateral line. Twelve, the applicant shall comply with all requirements identified in the Community and Economic Development Engineering and Public Works Engineering Department. Thirteen, the applicant shall comply with all storm drainage and grading requirements in Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen point four-six. Fourteen, the applicant shall comply with all utility lines and facility requirements in Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen point four-eight. Fifteen, the applicant shall comply with the street standard requirements in Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen point four-two. Sixteen, the new property lines shall be situated so that all buildings and structures comply with yard setback requirements of the residential low-density R one zone. Seventeen, in addition to engineering design standards, improvements installed by the developer for any land division either as a requirement of these regulations or the developer's options shall conform to the requirements of this development code. The improvement standards and specifications adopted by the city and shall be installed in accordance with the following procedures. A, city approval required. Improvement work shall not commence until plans are approved by the city. All plans shall be prepared in accordance with requirements of the city. B, notification. Improvement work shall not commence until the city has been notified in advance and if work has been discontinued for any reason. It shall not be resumed until the city has been notified. C, inspections. Improvements shall be constructed under the inspection and to the satisfaction of the Public Works Director or designee. The city may require changes in typical street sections and improvements if unusual conditions arise during construction to warrant such changes. D, installation of utilities. All underground utilities, sanitary sewer, and storm drains installed by the developer shall be constructed prior to the surfacing of the streets. Stub lengths eliminating the necessity for distributing the street improvements when service connections are made. E, as-built drawings. A plan or plan showing all public improvements as as-built shall be filed with the Department of Public Works upon completion of the improvements per Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen point five eight zero-seven-zero. Eighteen, within three years of the final decision, a final approved plat or first phase shall be recorded with the county. The first-phase final plat is not recorded within two. That should be amended within three years. The preliminary approval shall lapse and a new application shall be required. All phases of an approved plat shall be recorded within ten years of the final date of decision. Per Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen-one-one-zero point zero-eight-zero-A. Effective date for final plat approval, the approval process for a development shall be final upon the recording of approved final plat together with any required documents within the county. Approved final plat shall become void three years after the final city approval if they are not recorded. Approved final plat shall become void three years after the final city approval if they are not recorded. 20, the application shall obtain all applicable development permits, which include but are not limited to public works permits, development permits, including building permits, and erosion control permits. The applicant shall obtain a 1200C stormwater permit from the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality and any Department of State lands permits as applicable. And I have two more that I tried to catch all the revisions, I missed a couple. So. Condition of approval 18, where it says recorded within two years, that should say three years. And then the two additional conditions, which I gave you copies of, is pursuant to an improvement agreement. The applicant shall construct a half street improvement along the east frontage of 23rd Avenue between Harding Street and foothills drive as specified in the city's street. Design standards and consistent with the Sweet Home Transportation System Plan. The half street improvement shall include eight foot travel lanes in each direction, seven foot parking lane, six inch curb, 18 inch minimum gutter bar, three foot planter strip and five foot sidewalk, as shown in detail three sheet C 102. The applicant shall receive system development charge SDC's credits for all costs associated with the offsite half street improvements in 23rd Avenue. Constructed beyond the width required to satisfy the fire code standard secondary access of 20 feet. And then the second additional condition of approval is the city of Sweet Home shall acquire a right of way dedication along the west property frontage of 2305 Harding Street, so that the construction of 23rd Avenue, street and pedestrian improvements along this property frontage may occur. And the event of the right of way is not acquired, 23rd Avenue improvements along the property frontage will be reduced to what can be achieved within the existing right of way. So before we move on to questions. The applicant submitted a revised site plan this afternoon, which you have copies of with the email. I went through the site plan and just made notes of some of the differences instead of going through an entire new staff report. So. Yes. So this site plan that was submitted today, September 5th, shows 26 residential lots, one storm detention lot and associated roadway and utility improvements. Lot sizes will range in, will range from 7,309 square feet to 12,381 square feet, which is still over the 7,000 square foot minimum. Access, the subject property has access from foothills drive and 23rd Avenue. Lots 13, 14, 17, 18, 21 and 25 are accessed via flag lots. Lot 22 and 26 are accessed via access and utility easements, which fall below the 10% allowable access easements. And will make it to where they don't need a variance if this plan is approved. Waterline easement shown, the waterline easement was added to this, shown from foothills drive to the rear lot of 25. There are proposing six flag lots, which are 20 feet in width with an improved surface of 16 feet. If this option is chosen, we will need to amend the following conditions of approval. So condition number one, we'll need to amend the information to match the site plan submitted today. We will need to remove number two. Number three, we will amend lot numbers from 25 and 26 to 24 and 25. And number nine, we will need to amend the lot numbers 13 through 26 to 13, 14, 17, 18, 21, 22, 25 and 26. So. Did you say 26 lot? Oh, sorry, 27, yeah, there's still 27, oops.
Angela, am I going to need to reference all the changes and amendments on those? If we do, if there is an approval, do we, do I need to reference all of those?
If you want, if you are to approve as read, you can just say amended as read. I have it all.
I want to make notes if I need.
I know.
Thank you, Angela. With that, we will move on to our applicant testimony. So I'd like to invite our applicant up. And please, when you have a seat, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Brian Vendetta, 63 East Ash Street, Lebanon, Oregon. Want to thank Angela for such a fine staff report, she makes my job very easy. I really want to kind of back up though, and just give an explanation as to why we submitted a plan today at last minute. If you recall, the last hearing, there was some concern about the number of lots that were accessed via the easements. So we went through what we would call a fairly quick iteration to revise it to get closer to the 10%. Then when Angela came back from vacation, she sent Laura in my office, some comments received by the neighbors. I went through those comments by the neighbors and thought, you know, they have some good thoughts here. Maybe we should increase the number of flag lots if we can without reducing the lot widths to below the standard. So that's what we did. We got as many of the lots accessed by flags as were permissible with the dimensions we're dealing with. And reduce the number of lots that are accessed solely by easements down to two under the 10%. So we believe that we've gotten fully compliant with your development code standards. We lost a couple of lots in doing so, which my client wasn't terribly happy with, but we did get there. So with that, I don't have anything further to add to the testimony, but I'd love to answer any questions if you have some.
All right. Commissioners.
The flag lot 425 says that it's a 16.93 width. And I think we required 20 feet.
And there's a curve there, so 16.93 feet of it plus the 3.07 feet of the curved portion.
Oh, I didn't see that.
As it starts to trick, as it transitions into the widened road, so the, the width is 20.
I do see that.
Yeah, paved surface will be 16.
I see that now, yeah, thank you.
You bet.
Any additional thought to lot 11 absorbing the storm drain?
Lot? No, we haven't given any more thought to that.
It seemed to work well on the corner of South Main and Crowfoot in Lebanon. And Eagleview Estates.
Okay.
That corner.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with whether that lot owns the tract or not.
Yeah.
But I know that my client does not want to do an HOA. So if this is the only reason for an HOA to be formed, then we would, we'd be combining it with lot 11. Or be requesting that permission to do that. So I suppose what would be prudent, maybe if, if we do get to an approval tonight, maybe the condition allows both options.
Yep, okay.
Thank you.
I appreciate the driveway widths on the flags. They've got 40 feet instead of the 20 that they had with the easement before.
You're welcome.
I like that a lot.
I definitely appreciate seeing a plan that conforms to the code and isn't creating any lots that are requesting any sort of exceptions. That makes me feel more confident that it'll be a healthy community once it is built or if it is completed as the plan laid out. Any other questions from our commissioners? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great. So now we're moving on to our proponents' testimony. So that's testimony from anyone wishing to speak in favor of this application. All right then, we will move on to our opponents' testimony. So this is a testimony from people wishing to speak in opposition to the application. If you wish to speak in opposition, please sign up in the back and Angela will bring your form up to me. But I do have Walker here as, is it Ron Walker? Please come on up, Ron. And when you have a seat, please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Ron Walker, address 2631 foothills drive, adjacent to the proposed subdivision. Like to thank the applicant for his efforts here on these accesses. I have a little bit of confusion if you would clear these up. For me, I may not be opposed as much as you think I am by, by this effort that's made here. The two, I'm going to call them roads for lack of any other terminology at this point. And it's very hard on a small piece of paper to read the numbers. But the first two that are closest to me, which would be the west or the east end of foothills drive, look like they are 20 feet. That's on between lot 24 and 27 and 20 and 23.
That is correct.
Those are 20, okay, and those are paved. That's going to be paved, the dark part is what is going to be paved, is that correct?
The paved surface will be 16 feet wide.
Okay, but you have. Okay, but those are 20 feet.
20 foot wide driveway.
And the other two? Total width?
The other two at the end connecting the flag lots, those are 20 feet apiece, so 40 foot wide.
Okay, with 16 foot.
Paved.
Paved, okay. And is the pavement going to be the responsibility of the owner or the city or?
That would likely be, the, the city would not be taking on responsibility for those driveways. That would be the responsibility of the property owners. And so in cases where the driveway is shared, and we can certainly include this as a condition of approval if we wanted to make sure. But typically the practice is that if there's a shared driveway that both, all of the houses that utilize it are, have an agreement that's, that runs with the land, that they have to share maintenance of that driveway.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's probably one of the larger problems I have with shared driveways is people's responsibilities get shirked. I would prefer obviously to see everybody have their own driveway and you're responsible for keeping care of it. Appreciate the efforts that's been made here. My only other comment is on the, the two that do have the shared access here that couple of lots that kind of get left out is 22 and 26. They, the driveway is on the other person's property, so they don't really have a driveway. They're sharing that and that's kind of one of those things that gets into a civil issue. That's a personal opinion there.
There would be an easement for, for those. And a maintenance agreement.
Okay, yeah, well, yeah, easements are great and all, but now that we've got them wider here, I think we've made an effort to where if somebody should have to come in there and dig up and block that for any period of time, that the homeowners still have access to their properties. So thumbs up on that one. I would have obviously preferred to see a bona fide cul-de-sac, which in my definition is around about at the end. But by dictionary definition, it's a street or passage that is closed at one end. So, and I know how the, I know how the city feels about cul-de-sacs, but here we kind of have four of them. Anyway, that's about all I got to say on that. And the only other question I really had was do we have fire department blessing on this? Have they, have they checked the box or anything? I haven't heard a word about fire department. And that's, and that's important when it comes to the access aspect.
Yes, so I can speak to that. So fire department technically does not have to sign off on the preliminary plans. It's when the final plans get signed off on and then they come in and they do, when we start doing development is when they take a look at it and they do approval. We do ask for them comments if they're available, but they don't technically have to weigh in until we're actually to the development stage of it.
Okay, well, that clears things up a little bit for me because at the hearing for 2101, Chief Barringer was present as well as the chief of police at the time, and they had input. And that was in preliminary, so that's why I asked that question.
They're not required, and I can tell you Chief Tyler's away on a fire right now, so we wouldn't be able to get his comment.
Another story, but he should have somebody doing that in his absence. Anyway, the ball, the ball must keep rolling, even though he's away on a fire. Somebody's running the show.
But that's a separate organization, so we don't have.
I understand, merely a comment, trying to get my question answered. Their input is valuable.
Agreed.
So, okay, I'm sure my three minutes is up, Angela, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Thank you.
Angela, do we receive any additional comment cards? I didn't see anybody.
We did not, but I do want to, there has been a lot of talk about cul-de-sacs. We do have code that said, you know, that talks about the city does not encourage them, you know, they prefer. So just to keep that in mind, we, our code actually does state that the city does not prefer cul-de-sacs, you know, over the flag lots. So just as a note of the reason why we don't push those.
And it would become a city responsibility?
Sure, it would. One, one thing that Angela and I have talked to us about regarding this is, is the provision of our code that says that cul-de-sacs are discouraged. That provision doesn't really mention access easements at all. It doesn't mention flag lots at all. And so as we move forward in any amendments that we make in the future, one that I think is reasonable is that we amend that to say that yes, we discourage, we, we don't want to have a lot of cul-de-sacs, but we would prefer cul-de-sacs over access easements. Or prefer cul-de-sacs over flag lots, because I, I see it as kind of a hierarchy of what your preferred access is to a lot. And certainly on-street is always going to be preferred on a, on a through street that has full circulation. But when it comes to beyond that of, you know, there are certain properties where that's just not possible. Yes, we don't want cul-de-sacs, but I think we'd rather see one than a bunch of shared driveways. And, and so that's, I think that's something that we may want to look at amending our code to include.
Also, to be more specific too, there's different styles and shapes of cul-de-sacs and some are better than others. You know, the, the small, thin hammerhead types are. There's many different types.
But don't cul-de-sacs require curbs and sidewalks and?
Yes.
Cheered not to interrupt, but if we want to close the public hearing and then we can have discussion.
Thank you.
I'll try to keep us in line.
All right, then we'll go ahead and move to our neutral testimony. Is there anybody who wants to testify neither in favor or in opposition to the application? All right, would you like to come up for a rebuttal, our applicant? All right, thank you. All right, then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:14 PM and open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners.
Way better.
I'd really like to see a plan that doesn't create lots that require exceptions, so. And all conforming to our code.
I agree. And just a quick comment too, to Mr. Walker, because of testimony, it makes our job a little bit easier to, you know, not just go ahead and rubber stamp something that seems to make sense, but doesn't meet our code. And public input is how we know what the citizens want in our communities, so it's much appreciated.
So Angela, question about the timing. Question about the timing of the submission of the variations today. We don't have any timeframe because it's, it's a burden for us to go through this minutes before with, and there's a lot of information here. And I'm not saying that we can't do it. But I'm just wondering what our timeframe allowances.
So it does, so our rules for submission for planning commission meetings is anything. So if you want it in the packet, it has to be with the week before. But anybody can submit anything up until the day of, but that will just get handed to you. So it doesn't have to go in the packet. If we would like to change that procedure where I email it to you, however, when I, you wouldn't have gotten it.
Yeah.
You would have gotten it earlier today, but not much earlier, so.
In, in the case of an application like this, when there's a full plan to re, to, to review that, that was turned in later. Obviously, they did as we asked and they had submitted a different version in time, and then this came later. If this is something that concerns you, you know, we, we want to be as friendly to the applicant as possible, but we also want to be as, as cognizant of, of these difficulties to the planning commission. And so I would, I would prefer to err on the side of allowing the applicant to submit, but then giving the planning commission the option to continue the meeting if you want more time to digest a, a revision in a plan. And so if, if the, in the case of, in the case before us, these are fairly similar. And then one is that the revision was more in compliance with, with our code. And so we felt that it's still important to submit that and allow it to be discussed. Again, the option is certainly in your hands if you wish to have more time. Again, the option is certainly in your hands if you wish to have more time to review the materials that were submitted later.
So I think it's really water under the bridge at this point, but certainly something to put on the parking lot to be discussed at a later time. Because I see a submission like this in the last meeting as a burden to staff. Because you certainly have things scheduled for today. And something like this could be over and above what you're capable of. So that's a concern of mine as well. In addition to just our being able to, in a way, it feels like we do it on the fly in front of us in this manner.
I think in a different situation, I think staff would have been more resistant to taking something in and would have, you know, asked if the applicant wanted to continue the meeting or something like that. But it, it there, it is nice to have that flexibility as a staff member because what may be a burden the day of may be a better option than continuing the issue for longer down the road.
And when I received this amended plan, I looked at it and I go through my staff report before I come in here anyway and highlight stuff and I still end up repeating half the stuff because I don't catch it. But I go through it all, so I was able to go through them both at the same time and then I could catch the differences and be able to tell. So they submitted it with plenty of time for me to do that because I go through our whole staff report anyway, right before here. And so I was able to pick out everything that would be changed and make it to where we wouldn't need a variance, which is also why I asked to hear the subdivision applications first. So it's, yes, it can put a strain, but in this case it actually worked out great because I got it right before I started that process. So.
Thank you.
Well, last, last meeting when we went over this, we had lots of different concerns. And it looks like with this revision that the, they have tried to address all of those concerns. All the questions I had last time have been answered by this plan. So I, I don't have any more questions about it now.
Henry?
Just a general comment. I'm probably in favor of what's presented. But just a personal opinion, and I hope that's all right. The cul-de-sac would be then city owned. And when we have access easements or shared driveways, it may be fine now, but 10 years or 15 years from now, when neighbors hate each other, it's a totally different ballgame. And I am just one that favors city ownership of streets. And I would probably favor cul-de-sacs here, but I'm not going to stand in the way of moving this application forward.
So just as a reminder, when you're considering this and what decision you will need to choose, which version you are voting on. Since there are two in front of you, you will need to, so either the August.
One, zero, one B or C.
I think they have the same. So the one submitted, I would say either the one submitted August 27th or the one submitted September 5th.
Okay.
I'm prepared to make a motion. I would move to approve application SD 24 dash zero, one with the submittal of September 5th, 2024, identified as C101B, including the conditions of approval listed in section four of the staff report, adopting the findings of fact listed in section three of the staff report, including the revisions that were read of record with the additional condition that lot 11 be considered to allow the absorption of the storm detention lot. The setting of a 12-day appeal period from the date of the mailing of the decision and direct staff to prepare in order to be signed by the chair to memorialize the decision.
Can I make one clarification?
Yeah.
Or ask for a clarification?
Yes.
The added condition that the storm detention base can be absorbed into lot 11.
An option.
Do, you, you want that as an option of either that or an HOA?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to clarify.
Whatever you guys work out. Yep.
That works.
As amended.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I will second that motion.
We have motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? Then the motion passes. It's approved.
So since the version, you chose the version that was submitted today, there is no longer a need for the variance application. So the variance application can be canceled. I'm assuming the applicant is happy about that.
Let's make him present it.
You really don't have anything to do tonight, do you?
Yeah.
All right. Well, then.
All right. Thank you.
That concludes our public hearings for the day and we will move on to staff updates. Thank you everyone for coming and sharing your comments.
Staff updates.
Parks master plan.
Oh, yeah. Next, the next meeting will be a public hearing for the Parks Master Plan. And one thing we're doing that's a little bit different than the last, I, I, I actually learned yesterday, I believe, that our 2014 Parks System Plan does not appear to ever have been adopted. At least not, not by resolution and, and it was never added to the, the comprehensive plan. So we are rectifying. Wow. Hopefully everybody's okay. We are rectifying that with, with this one and the, the this particular Parks Master Plan is proposed to be added as an appendix to our comprehensive plan. So it'll be, it'll go through that full adoption process and have a planning, a, a public hearing in front of all of you and a public hearing in front of the city council as well.
And that will be.
What is the date on that?
Yeah.
The September 19th is the Planning Commission public hearing for that. And then October 12th, I believe, will be the city council public hearing.
Any applications for the vacant planning commissions?
Um, we do have some applications and the interviews unfortunately have not been scheduled yet.
Okay.
So also on the September 19th meeting, we will have another, we will have a conditional use application that you will be listening to. And then just a plug, Harvest Festival is October 5th and I am looking for chili judges and pie judges. So, yeah, so anybody that really likes chili and pie, let me know.
I've been a chili judge in the past. I recommend it.
I love chili.
Yeah. No, I, I need.
Like that.
So they do people's choice. They do people's choice, judges' choice, and then grand prize. And then all of the funds from the chili cook-off go to the Sweet Home Kids Food Pack. And then all of the funds for the pie bake-off go to park programs.
And that's October 5th?
October 5th. And just let me know if you want to confirm to be a judge and I'll put you on the list. So.
Okay.
I will be out of state. Or you will.
It's a really good love of.
And if you don't want to be a judge, but want to show up, we have about 60 vendors as of today. I think maybe 62.
60?
Yeah. And there's about five, four food trucks, five food trucks. So.
This is a throne.
I'm running out of room.
Yeah.
So not to beat a dead horse, but I might be beating a dead horse. I just want to make sure that the comments we made today will be put on some parking lot and not forgotten.
Yes.
Down the road when we have time and attention to attend to them.
Do we want to, well, we do have the section of planning commission business. So do we want to do that tonight or do you want to put it off to a, a future?
No, I think putting it off is fine. Just setting a date when it works for you and you can have materials ready or whatever.
Okay.
This is specifically regarding the issue with submission, late submissions?
Late submissions and maybe discussions about cul-de-sac versus flag lots and changes for that. And then there was one other.
We have a number of code amendments that we're working on and, and if it's permissible, we would just put the, the cul-de-sac issue into those and bring that all to you together.
That would be.
Regarding late submissions, we're happy to talk about however you'd like to handle things like that. One thing, I, I guess I do, I do appreciate having some flexibility with those things that if the, if we can have some discretion to accept a late, a, a late submission when it's advantageous to the city, I, I'd like to have that option, but then always have the option where if you're getting something and you don't have enough time to review it because it was a late submission, that you always have the option to, as a, as a body to continue the meeting to a, a later date.
Like putting in verbiage, maybe that their, their cutoff time is, but if additional is submitted and like staff has available time, that then that may, that it could come to the, to our, that next meeting. Just making it based on the amount of staff availability that we have for those last minute changes is that.
We, we will do what you're comfortable with.
I also don't want to encourage the situation of somebody else's lack of planning becomes our emergency. So that's another part of the decision and considerations.
And I, I can tell you in this situation, so I left early last week and I asked them, no, I just, I asked them to submit early. So they were trying very hard to get something in there before I left on vacation, but, so I appreciated them. So. And one of the things I can do, because I did go through and pull out all the changes of the different ones. Next time what I can do is I can type that up. So you guys have a copy of those changes. So as I was reading them, I thought, I don't know why I didn't send you guys. Yeah. Yeah. So I did put a note to myself that next time to type those up. So.
One other item, and I, forgive me, I forgot to bring this up earlier. We are in the midst of our housing production strategy. It's one of the mandated state programs. And there will need to be some meetings in front of you all and the planet, and the city council to kind of discuss some of the findings and recommendations from that. And forgive me, I'm forgetting when exactly we talked about that happening. And if you can be just a minute, I'll give you the actual date.
Congratulations Angela on your son graduating from boot camp.
Oh, thank you. Yes, I'm.
That's an accomplishment.
Yep.
I'm learning that military mom is turning me into a crybaby. So I'm.
Yeah.
I'm sure I like that.
Yep. Especially in the world we live in.
Yes. Nope, he's doing well. He's AIT, getting ready to start medic classes.
Excellent.
Okay. Sorry about that. So we are looking at having a joint work session with the city council and the planning commission together to hear from the consultants on the housing production strategy. And the date that we are planning is September 24th, which is a Tuesday night. It's a normal meeting night for the city council, but it would be at 5:30. So 5:30 to 6:30, followed by the city council meeting. And so if that is a time that works for all of you, we will move forward with that date.
Yes, I'll be here.
And then the, there would be a joint public hearing then on Tuesday, November 12th, which also is a city council meeting night.
What was that date for the joint?
So they, they would be both joint meetings. One would be a joint work session. And that is September 24th at 5:30 PM here. And then the joint public hearing would be Tuesday, November 12th at 6:30. I think that's, as far as staff updates, that's all we've got.
Any other discussion?
How's the transportation system plan coming along?
It's continuing to inch forward.
Okay.
Taking a little, I just had a, I was supposed to have a meeting this afternoon and the consultant pushed it back to next Tuesday. And I wish I could say that was the first time that that's happened, but it's been a, it's been a habit. And this is not a consultant that we chose. This was ODOT chose for us. So we take what we can get. It's, it's all grant funded. It's kind of frustrating that way.
Right. Okay.
Well, then let's adjourn the meeting at 7:30 or yeah, 31, 7:31. Great. Thanks, John.
Keep your eyes on the newspaper too. There's, someday there's going to be a counselor candidate showcase or something or Q and A thing. We have 12 candidates for city council seats, which there's four seats open and one, only one incumbent running and 12 people total running. So that's different. Should be an interesting election season. In many ways.
Saw that. I was looking through, picking out which people I know and.